Called a meeting to order this evening. We convene the regular October meeting here at this time. We will have, roll call please. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. We have no proclamations and presentations this evening. And mayor's announcements and community activities, I think they're in the past. I'd like to just make sure we thank all of our staff for a great festival weekend, for our city and the many nonprofits that were involved in sharing of their time and energy and resources out there. And thank all the council. I'm sure you'll report out on all your sales and activities to a certain level, so thank all of you for all your hard work. City Attorney, report out a closed session, please.
Yes. Thank you Mayor Mueller, members of the city council. There were three items on this evening's closed session agenda. The first was a matter of real property negotiations involving parcel of city-owned property adjacent to the 360 Grinelli Avenue property. The city council received a report from city attorney's office and gave direction there was no reportable action taken. The other two items were pending litigation items. The first is the lawsuit involving Gradstein versus the California Coastal Commission, the City of Half Moon Bay, and Mark Staloski as real party in interest. Second lawsuit was the City of Half Moon Bay versus the insurance company of the state of Pennsylvania. This is the ongoing litigation relating to the insurance coverage issues involving the Yamagawa litigation. Council received a report from the city attorney's office, but there was no reportable action taken. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. We'll go to city council reports. Councilmember Alafano.
Pretty quiet. We had the Government Affairs Committee meeting at the chamber, and it's always good dealing with the other representatives from the area, Jerry Hill's people and Rich Gordon's people. And then we had a Nights of Light meeting on the 10th, and everything's proceeding well. And I think MAGDA may be talking about doing an open hall that Nights of Lights when we have the festival, which I think is a great idea. So everything's moving very well, and it should be another great event.
Well, I didn't have any meetings to go to, so it was very quiet for me. I'm winding down. But I did participate in the pumpkin festival. It was very successful. I was hoping that some of the committee members were going to be here, but it was really successful this year. And I think Dolores and Mel held off the rain for us and let it come down on Monday. So we're very fortunate about that. We didn't get any rain because I had cut our order back because of the rain. But we did sell out our hot dogs, corn dogs. So it was fun. Lot of work, but I'll tell you, it really helps the girls softball program. We do not have to send little girls going out door-to-door selling candy or cookies because of pumpkin festival, so we're very thankful for that.
Thank you, Councilman Kowalczek.
So Councilmember Patrick, just a reminder, my offer still stands for all the kids. When they're selling stuff to raise money for their activities, I always say yes. So send them my way. So I've just got back from a 14-hour flight, so I don't have much to report. I spent the last 10 days in China on business, so I'm happy to be back. This is the first pumpkin festival I wasn't able to participate in in 14 years. So I missed it, and I will make sure I don't miss the next one. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, please.
No meetings. Some of my meetings were canceled, but just want to say thank you to the community, to the thousand-plus people that worked at Pumpkin Festival this weekend on behalf of all their nonprofits. I thought this was one of the most successful ones. People had commented that the signage was better than ever. People who'd just moved to town were able to go about and find things. So I think after 44 years, you definitely have it downright. So thanks to the Pumpkin Beautification Committee for their efforts. Just one thing of note, I run the pumpkin carving activity on Sunday, and it's always fascinating to find other people from different countries who have never carved a pumpkin before and want help doing it. So it's not just the kids, it's the adults that enjoy that. We have people from Israel. There's always the people from Japan are just fascinated with that. So we helped them and drew pictures and had some of the kids help them too. So that's always lots of fun.
Thank you. Yes, I had visitors from New Zealand to day carve pumpkins, so it follows up exactly what you said. They were very fascinated by carving. And they were staying in town and spending some funds here, and so I think that's very good. I think we all kind of have a little pumpkin festival hangover, but I would like to thank, yeah, we're tired. Lieutenant Muncie and Sheriff's Office and all the volunteer other departments that step up and come over and help you. Sheriff Muncie, if you'd like to say a couple of words, you're more than welcome to say a couple of words. And I think it went fairly smooth. It looked like everybody was directing traffic as best as possible, if there's such a thing of a festival weekend.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. We did. We had a rather safe pumpkin festival. It was my first one, so it was something I was just getting used to. We had a few lost children, or we come to find out we had lost parents. Children seemed to know right where they were at. And public intoxication was very minor, and it's the traffic. But I think other than that, everybody worked well together, and we had a great festival.
How many departments did we have step up and come over from other PDs?
We had a total of three other departments coming in to help. You know, it's really our volunteers that make this thing work, and they just did a great job. I think we had near 50 volunteers between our communications, search and rescue, and explorer groups. They just came in and just did a great job.
Thank you all, and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, city managers, updates to the council, please.
Thank you very much. Just a quick update on the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee. We are still looking for applications. The last time I checked, we've only had two people who have expressed interest. We will be looking at extending that date potentially so that we can get more people to express their interest and get engaged and ask the community to consider it and ask the council to help us do more outreach. So we'll try to do a little bit more outreach on that as well. I can come back with you with the exact dates. We don't have a date yet in mind, but we'll extend that for some time. Pumpkin Festival, we've touched on it a little bit. I think Lieutenant Muncie and I were the two most nervous people around because we were in different roles in terms of the Pumpkin Festival, but everybody kept telling us, be calm, everything will be fine, and certainly it was. It was just very impressive, I must say, very impressive in terms of the number of volunteers, the sense and spirit of community that was witnessed on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It was really a lovely event, and Half Moon Bay should be very proud. It was just a great, great event. And I did get a chance to stop by the EOC on both days. And as Lieutenant Muncie mentioned, the number of volunteers that make this possible and make this work very well is very impressive, and I'm just very grateful for that. Pilar Cito's Creek Bridge, not a whole lot to report, a little bit of an update, and I'd like to ask the deputy city manager to just give us a quick update on things, as we know, keep changing and evolving very quickly. So we'll just give you the latest that we have as of this afternoon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Alex Kojikian, deputy city manager. Just a couple of updates over the last two weeks that have evolved since we got the announcement that State Parks had some extra funds left over from a project that went under cost. We found out from the Coastal Conservancy that they still stand behind this project and are putting forth their $200,000 for environmental planning permitting and design work, the soft costs. City staff has forwarded on the Big Scardozza report that you guys heard at the last council meeting, off to State Parks and Coastal Conservancy staff for review. We're going to be having an all-hands-on-deck meeting between city staff, Coastal Conservancy staff, and State Parks regarding the agreement and ironing out those, and that includes both our city attorney and State Park Staff Council, and also just process, timeline, project management, everything that goes into actually pushing this project forward at this time. We're anticipating that legislative review will begin hopefully within the next three to four weeks. And so we're still working with Jerry Hill's office and Rich Gordon's office and keeping on top of that as well. So that's what I have to report, and I can answer any questions.
Councilman Kowalczek.
Thank you, Alex, for the update. I know we had a lot of success in collaborating with Supervisor Horsley's office regarding access in the project at Surf Beach, and I think we should consider and invite them to participate in this process, both from a perspective to be informed and from a perspective to help fund a solution that serves both the city and the county. And so if there's an opportunity, I guess I'd ask you to look for the nearest, most appropriate opportunity to engage them. We probably need to give them an update, but also invite them to be part of the process.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Councilman Alafano.
Alex, I know you're going to have a much better feeling after your meeting, but right at this point, because I get asked this question a lot, what do you think the best guess for a timeline would be?
So the timeline that we're working on, that Big Scardozza has kind of put together for the entire process, if everything goes smoothly with no hiccups, we'll hopefully have a new structure in place by October 15th of 2015, which would be two years before what was originally planned.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Alex. I forgot to mention in my report quickly, I apologize, I'm a little tired. We'll move on to you, continue on. Road repairs. Yeah, I'm fine.
Yes. So excited about, as you know, the council made, allocated some dollars for much-needed road repairs throughout the city. We're not covering all areas yet, but they're on our list, as you know. And those repairs have started, and I think they've concluded. And I wanted to ask the Community Development Director Dante Hall to just give you and the community an update on those repairs. We've heard very nice comments about the work that's been done.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. So over the last several weeks, the contractor has been busy repairing about five miles of our streets for the Cape Seal project that you approved several weeks ago. The final step in the process, it's a three-step process, is the slurry seal, and that process should be complete by the end of next week. And a few weeks later, after all of that is cured, the contractor will come back and add the striping to all of the streets. We've had a relatively low level of complaints from the public. We had a one-day delay because of rain, and some people kind of complained about that, but we've been pretty much sticking to our 48-hour noticing of the public. And it appears that if people know they're going to be inconvenienced ahead of time, they're able to adjust a lot quicker. What's going to be coming to you in the next several weeks is our last process in the street system, and that's really the reconstruction of streets. We're doing the geotechnical work right now. In a couple of weeks, like I said, we will be coming back to you with a design and hopefully awarding a contract. And these are the streets that are in the worst shape, like Ventura, Washington, and the likes. That concludes my report.
Thank you. If I may, Dante, while you're there, quickly, thank you. I know staff worked really hard last week when there was a tentative construction work on Highway 92 that we were not notified about during this busy season, and staff jumped on it right away with Senator Hill and Rich Gordon, also an assembly member. And we thank you for taking that to another timetable for repairing on 92. It just kind of was bad planning time. Thanks to city staff that we took care of that. City Manager?
Yeah, two additional quick report announcements. Just remind everybody the Concert in the Park, Sunday, November 9th, from 1:00 to 3:00 at Mac Dutra Park. And just to follow up on Councilmember Alafano's comment, yes, in fact, City Hall will be open. We're going to provide an open house on Night of Lights and invite everybody to come and see us. We don't know exactly what it'll look like just yet, but we hope to have an opportunity to have the community comment on some general plan issues, be able to display some of the projects that we're working on, because the city is working on lots of projects right now, and just have an opportunity for the community to come in and see their government at work.
Thank you. That concludes that. So now we'll go on to public forum. It seems like we have a great number of cards this evening, so we'll start with Deborah Ruddick, please.
My name is Deborah Ruddick, and I live at 367 Metzger Street in Half Moon Bay. I've been troubled by various campaign practices, as we've all observed on talk about the online posting forum and the Half Moon Bay Review, as well as various incidents we've had at the city council meetings recently. And as a campaign for city council, I and all the candidates signed a Code of Fair Campaign Practices, which I think the public deserves to hear, and I'd like to read them into the record. I shall conduct my campaign openly and publicly. I shall not use or permit the use of character defamation, whispering campaigns, libel, slander, or scurrilous attacks on any candidate or his or her personal or family life. I shall not use or permit any appeal to negative prejudice based on race, sex, religion, national origin, physical health status, or age. I shall not use or permit any dishonest or unethical practice which tends to corrupt or undermine our American system of free elections, or which hampers or prevents the full and free expression of the will of the voters, including acts intended to hinder or prevent any eligible person from registering to vote, enrolling to vote, or voting. I shall not coerce election help or campaign contributions. I shall immediately and publicly repudiate support deriving from any individual or group which resorts on behalf of my candidacy or in opposition to that of my opponent to the methods and tactics which I condemn. I shall accept responsibility to take firm action against any subordinate who violates any provision of this code or the laws governing elections. I shall defend and uphold the right of every qualified American voter to full and equal participation in the electoral process, and I would like to add, including cameramen of public meetings. And the Code of Fair Campaign Practices starts by saying something that I believe applies not just to candidates but to public officials, because after all, we are public servants and not just politicians. And it states, "There are basic principles of decency, honesty, and fair play which every candidate for public office in the state of California has a moral obligation to observe and uphold, in order that after vigorously contested but fairly conducted campaigns, our citizens may exercise their constitutional right to a free and untrammeled choice, and the will of the people may be fully and clearly expressed on the issues." Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Fisher, please.
My name is Pamela Fisher. I live at 659 Highland Avenue here in Half Moon Bay. I was a victim of this kind of negative campaigning eight years ago when I ran for CUSD's board. I had just come off of a school board that I served on for two terms before moving here. And when I arrived and had an issue that occurred with CUSD at the high school campus, basically not being good neighbors, removing heritage trees, doing all of these other things that I didn't even know was illegal at the time, however, it certainly didn't meet good neighbor policy. At any rate, in deciding to run and saying, "I could help them do better here. This is not what should be happening," I was the victim of an underground network of sports enthusiasts claiming I hated children, I hated sports. Of course, I spent my life in schools. I am an educator. So I mean, these were just outrageous libelous accusations that were basically occurring by organizations that had 504(c)(3) status. Now, I could have easily and was tempted to file complaints with the FPPC. However, I really felt I would not get down to that level. I took the defeat and went on to continue to support education in this community and at least from time to time, offer the best of my knowledge that I could to the district, still encouraging good neighbor behavior, abiding by all municipal and coastal laws. At any rate, I just want to say that the kind of behavior I have witnessed does not get you good government. If you don't like what somebody has said, refute it. Don't deflect. Let's deal in honest, open, adult, mature discussion of the issues that people have with governance in this community. That's how you get a good representative government.
Thank you. And I believe it's Doreen Gerdri, followed by Frank.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and city council members. My name is Doreen Gerdri. I live at 689 Silver Avenue. And I'm here tonight to talk about two items. The first item is about the city council meeting two weeks ago. I did have the privilege of watching it live streaming, thanks to John and Dan Olin for providing that service. I got to cook my dinner in the kitchen and watch the meeting. But basically, when I was watching it, I was really shocked and upset. I heard and saw two things. The first thing I heard was John screaming, and the second thing was I saw no one on the city council or any staff stopping the meeting, asking for a break, and going down to assist him. I just can't believe that that happened. If it was me who was up here or in the audience and something happened to me and I was screaming, "Please someone call 911," I would hope that one of my city council members or one of the staff members would call 911 for me, stop the meeting, and assist until the proper authorities come in and help. The second item that I would like to discuss tonight is about the campaign election. Frankly, I am shocked and really upset how this campaign election is going. I'm here tonight to ask all the city council members to publicly denounce any of their opponents that are willing to personally attack another candidate written or verbally. We are all in the same community. We all go to the same restaurants. We all go to the same stores. We see each other on Highway 1. We're all in this together. This campaign election is hurting our community and our public image of our beautiful Half Moon Bay. I believe everybody who's running for city council is doing it for the best of their community. Everybody has the right to their opinions, but everybody does not have the right to create their own set of facts. So we need to put a stop to this vicious juvenile behavior now. I again urge all city council members, or city council candidates, to denounce publicly any of their supporters who choose to personally attack another candidate written or verbal. We all love Half Moon Bay, and we all want what's best for Half Moon Bay. Right now, what's happening is not what's best for Half Moon Bay. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Frank, please.
Frank Gerdri, also 689 Silver Avenue in Half Moon Bay. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm here tonight to speak, to echo many of the things that many of the people here tonight are saying and that many more that are not here tonight are saying. And basically, I mean, we're sickened, we're saddened, we're embarrassed by all the nastiness and the bullying and intimidation and the lies that we're seeing and hearing and reading in this campaign, just worse than ever. I think of it this way, every group, every company, group, organization I've ever been involved in has strived for a good work, to make a good working environment. And you do that for one very big reason, it's to attract talent. You want to be attractive to others coming in. You want to have people lining up at your door, wanting to get in your group and help you out. It's very basic. The more talent you have, the better the talent, the stronger and more successful your group is. How do you do that? You treat people in the group respectfully and honestly and professionally, and you build them up. And I've seen that in every group I've ever been involved in, except one, my own hometown of Half Moon Bay. Instead, we tend to disrespect and intimidate people, tell lies about them, and basically tear them down. And that's just, that's what's sad and sickening. We tear our own people down. There's so many smart and talented and hard-working people out in the community that could do so much to move this city forward, make it stronger, make it more successful, but those people stay home and stay quiet. They don't want to subject themselves and their families to the same type of things they're seeing others putting up with. I have no answer, but at minimum, I would expect and hope that this city council, as the highest civic body in the city, would make some public statement and condemn these type of behaviors and comments. I would hope the candidates would jump on it. I would hope they would show some leadership and talk to their groups and do all you can to discourage and prevent these type of comments. And when one does come out, jump on it quickly, strongly, decisively, and condemn that comment. Your silence basically is approval. You've got to say something when these come up. And that's basically what I would expect from candidates, the council, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Steinberg, followed by Jerry.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community. I'm here to support a new library, but I am against O. O will give us a very, very high sales tax, which for some reason, the council members think will only affect tourists and visitors. I and other members of Half Moon Bay shop here too. We buy books, groceries, yarn, gas, drugstore items, clothes, et cetera, and they all have us paying a large sales tax. In addition, as a very frequent user of the library, I'm acquainted with many of the people there, and they're excited about the prospect of a larger and better library. But O is not designed to give them that. O funds will be a blank check because they'll go into general funds where they can be used for anything, and there will not be enough to really build the library that's needed. So more money will be needed, and how will we get that? Many local communities have larger libraries than ours, but they do not have the high sales tax. How do they do it?
Thank you. Jerry, please.
Jerry Steinberg, 591 Terrace Avenue, Half Moon Bay. Thank you for allowing me to comment at tonight's meeting. In order for the residents to feel comfortable in attending council meetings and interacting with their neighbors, it's obvious that the council needs to set up a protocol for handling any emergencies that may arise at meetings. I was about five minutes late to the last meeting, and when I reached the building entrance, there were two sheriff patrol cars and four deputies at the entrance. Frankly, I looked around and didn't see any ambulances, so I asked the deputy if it was okay to go in. He smiled and said yes and pointed to the open side door. As I entered, I fortunately noticed a puddle of water, and I tiptoed around it without slipping. After one passes 77 years old, you just move slowly and carefully. I sat down in the last row of chairs and sat there through the meeting with one person sitting at the far end of the row. I didn't know until the meeting was over that Jennifer Kawaski had either tripped or not spilled some hot tea on John Olin until the folks in the front row of me, in front of the row of me, started loudly talking about it. My suggestion is this, somebody should have cleaned up the water hazard on the floor. The meeting should have been recessed so that the sheriffs- The meeting should have been recessed so that the sheriff's deputies could have interviewed any witnesses to the event. Please codify some protocol that will provide residents a safe meeting experience. Thank you.
Thank you. John Lynch, please.
John Lynch, council members. 2098 Torren Lane in Half Moon Bay for 41 years. I have seen many city councils come and go, but this city council is different. Why? Because most city councils give direction to staff and their consultants, but not this council. Instead, our staff and consultants give direction to the council. My fervent hope is that this election will bring, will sit a new council that will provide the necessary leadership urgently needed. Hey, and I don't have any hot tea in my hand either.
Thank you. David Blovie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What an ugly two weeks. It doesn't reflect well in our community in a time when we should be celebrating. I just sat here and watched six people come up and speak in front of the council, and at least one council person couldn't be bothered to stop doing what they're doing on their computer or to listen to the people who were speaking to them. This is the feeling that the community has about the council and about the ugliness that has happened over the last two weeks. All of us who are running signed this document, and Ms. Reddick brought it tonight, and I thank her because I couldn't do any better than this, so I'm just going to reread several pertinent parts of it. I shall not use or permit the use of character defamation, whispering, I'm sorry, whispering campaigns, glasses dummy, libel, slander, or scurrilous attacks on any candidate or his personal or family life. The past two weeks have seen no less than two physical confrontations and no less than five attacks that we're aware of. There may be more. The only commonality between them is that they are against individuals who oppose the council, which is why everybody is here speaking to you tonight. I shall not use or permit any appeal to negative prejudice based on race, sex, religion, national origin, physical, health status, or age. And then lastly, I shall not use or permit any dishonest or unethical practice, which tends to corrupt or undermine our American system of free elections. No one has said a word about what has happened over the last two weeks, except the people in the community. The community is asking you, is begging you to step up. I'm begging you to step up and stop this. Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Sheerden, please.
Donald Sheerden, 45 Medio Avenue, Half Moon Bay. I agree with the other speakers. I was disgusted when I saw the video and saw the way the city council, and not just the city council, but the city manager, the attorney, and people that know better, didn't support somebody who was injured. I wouldn't, we treat dogs better than that. It's disgusting. How are we going to stop bullying in schools if there's bullying going on in this council? And if you don't think it's bullying, it's bullying. I've been going to city council meetings for 25 years. It's never been so ugly. And it's got to stop. And a good time to stop it is right now with the election of two new members. Hope we get some fresh blood in there, because what's working right now, what's happening right now isn't working. This whole rubbish about Measure O and the library. I just bought a new car. I tell you, it's expensive when you've got the highest property tax in California. We're taxed enough. The library will go on. The improper use and the incredible bills from the city attorney needs to be looked into. A lot of these claims, lies need to be looked into. The city council is, it's never been as ugly as this before in 25 years. I'll tell you how ugly it is. Last week, when that person got injured here, Mayor Mueller continued to talk about some oaky thing about someone from Australia coming to his pumpkin patch. It wasn't important during the meeting to let the police do what they need to do. What the police need to do when they, is to come into a room and investigate it. Mayor Mueller, and I quote his words, he said, "Officer, sergeant." Then he said, "Sergeant, can we take this out of the room?" So what is this, a police state now, the running police? That's the point we're at. That's the state we're at, you know? Just disgusting. It's disgusting by anyone's standard. Anyone who sees that video, and I've got friends who've seen that video, everybody is disgusting. It is the most disgusting thing to see. You're sitting there smiling, big smile on your face, like a bunch of Cheshire kittens, Cheshire cats. Not funny. Not funny when someone gets hurt. Not the way we do it in this town, you know? This year is the first year I didn't go to the pumpkin festival. My kid didn't come, I didn't come to it. We'll come next year, but this year is just sickening to see that going. I'm very optimistic things will change. Sometimes things have got to get bad before they get better.
Thank you.
And this is an all-time low right now. Thank you.
Last card, Harvey Rabeck, please.
Harvey Rabeck, 464 Pine Avenue, Half Moon Bay. Mayor, council members. I want to report on what happened two weeks ago at the last council meeting. I was sitting over there, and I heard somebody scream out in pain, and he said he was assaulted. So I didn't know, I had, the person was behind me, but I immediately called 911 because I heard that somebody was in pain and was being assaulted. And the 911 operator said, "What happened?" And I said, "I believe there was an assault." And the operator said, "Do you know the name of the assailant?" I said, "I had no idea." Somebody in the audience pointed out a woman who was sitting down, and so I politely went and tapped her on her shoulder, and you can see that on the Citizen Access TV, the interaction I had with her. And I said, "What's your name?" And she looked at, she didn't look at me. She looked straight ahead, and she said, "You're not a cop. I don't have to tell you." Okay, fine. So I went back and reported to the operator what I just learned. And by that time, the deputies had come and were questioning John Olin, who I found out it was John Olin who was being assaulted, and apparently Jennifer Zhang. The next day, I read that council member Kowalczek said that I had abused the deputy's system by calling 911, and in a political act, I had called 911 on his wife. That's a quote. The reality is that I had no idea who this person was until much later in the meeting when somebody told me. I thought I was doing the right thing by calling 911. I still think so. It was absolutely not politically motivated. I had no idea who the assailant was. And when I hear these kind of crazy, politically motivated statements, it really offends me. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar at this time.
If there's no one wanting to pull any items, I would move to approve the consent calendar number one through six.
Spin moved in second for the consent calendar, one through six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So ordered, we move on to item seven, business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are very pleased to be here this evening and provide you a status report on the general plan update. Staff has been working very hard and has done a great amount of progress in terms of the update, lots of outreach. You just approved an item to do additional outreach for the general plan, and so the community development director will provide an update of the work that's been done to date and what, how, where we are in the process in terms of moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, like the city manager said, I'm just going to give a brief update of where we are. This diagram illustrates a balanced community, and this is something that I've been using with staff and with the community and with the consultants to illustrate that no two communities are alike, are the same. They all have their own needs, and they all have their own ways of dealing with things. But there are things that a lot of communities have that are common, and they consider as quality of life, and they want to balance things. So these things are natural environment, economic prosperity, you know, social stability, and things like that. These are all called kind of the livability qualities and standards, and this is essentially what we're trying to strive for in this general plan and really balancing a lot of these things. So as you know, the general plan update process is this multi-year, I'm sorry, this is a multi-year process, and it's an effort to really focus the discussion about what the city is going to look like in 25 years from now. We've gone through the process of developing background studies. We've got our visioning from the community, and now we're at the stage where we're going to be talking about choices and talking about land use alternatives. Then we're going to go to the community and ask them which land use alternatives that they prefer. This schedule is going to carry us out into 2016. We know essentially that the land that our city is rich with agricultural natural resource protection heritage, and through our existing conditions report, we know that about 40% of our land is devoted to agricultural uses, to nurseries, greenhouses, and open space. Another 14% is devoted to recreational uses. And so we're looking to how do we budget our available land uses with what people hold as dear and important to them. So through the process, we have had a number of meetings that we've listed up there. We've conducted a Spanish language meeting. We've met with seniors. We've met with the Chamber of Commerce, a number of different organizations. We've scheduled meetings with the Farm Bureau, the agricultural community, because we want to understand how do they see the future? You know, how are they, they see the future use of their property? What is the cutting edge when it comes to the agricultural community? The same thing with open space advocates. We're going to be meeting with them, bringing them all together in the same room, and really trying to understand what their strategic plan is, and are there ways that we can work together to create a consistent plan? And we'll continue to meet with people throughout this entire, entire process. So in order to get to where we are, this diagram kind of has little particles and little pieces that we've put together, and we've taken into account all the city's aspirations and challenges and issues, and we looked at that through the lens of our constraints, our existing land use characteristics, the economic condition, and so forth. And that process led to the establishment of the vision and the guiding principles that the city council, the G-PAC and Planning Commission approved several weeks ago. And building on those themes, we have worked to identify some emerging themes. So as we talked to people, there are several things that kept emerging time and time again. And so we, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but we're going to use that to develop land use alternatives to go to the community about. And at our last G-PAC meeting, we presented ideas for which to build and develop concept land use alternatives that will be going back to the G-PAC to talk about on November 3rd. And so this, this just represents getting to the choices. So what are, what are these drivers? What do people say time and time again? One of the themes that was, that was strongly felt was that people value the city's small-town character and feel. You know, they really appreciated the small development in appropriate places, and they had a lot of respect for agricultural heritage. And the other thing they said was they valued public gathering places and actually wanted to see more, more public gathering places. The next driver that was really prominent was that the city desired to have a more balanced community. They talked about with our limited land resources, is there a way that we can infuse a mix of uses like commercial, office uses, retail uses? They also talked about a diversity of housing products that are available to the residents and also revitalize downtown. So that was one of the other emerging drivers. Another very strong driver that emerged was this desire to conserve our natural resources and protect our open space. The community was really concerned and wanted us to develop a plan or a concept that preserved the scenic coal site and protected the wildlife and the sensitive habitat of the city, but also provided improved recreational opportunities and also a strategy for erosion control, sea level rise, and some of the other impending issues. Lastly, the concept that emerged was this concept about circulation and connectivity. The community desires better connections to schools, to downtown, to recreation, and other amenities in the city. And a lot of the conversation with community groups, with neighborhoods, is really looking at alternatives to north-south travel and east-west, not only cars, but bicycle routes, walking, transit. So we will take that into account and develop a theme based on those. So what we're going to do is we're going to build on those alternatives. And at our meeting, like I said, on December 3rd, we'll be presenting to the G-PAC three different, different alternatives for their comment. One will have a downtown focus. How do we vitalize our downtown? How do we utilize some infield, infield development to provide some of the services and amenities people have talked about? Another focus will be our open space and conservation focus. How do we protect our scenic coal site? How do we provide for our open space needs, not just now, but for the next 25 years, and recreational needs? And the third will be a focus on connectivity. You know, we have a lot of neighborhoods, especially on the east, northeast side of our city, that are kind of these spurs, you know, that, that lead from Highway One. Is there a plan or strategy to connect those and to make it safer and easier for those people to connect to schools, downtown, shopping areas, and so forth? And so what we'll do is we'll put those together along with maps, but we're also going to be providing some, some analysis of circulation improvements. So we're going to lay each of, each of the plans side by side, and we're going to tell the public essentially, Plan A, what does that mean to housing impacts? What does it mean to traffic impacts? What does it mean to greenhouse gases? And we'll, we'll use the same variables in which to provide information to the community. So we'll do that at our next, next meeting, and the goal through this entire process is for us to have a preferred plan. But I'll talk a little bit more- little bit more in my next slide about how that will happen, but there will be additional, a lot of opportunities for people to provide comment before we get to a preferred plan. So selecting an alternative, we've already had a lot of communication. We continue to get input from people. Like I said, we will be providing and laying out the three land use alternatives. Once we get buy-off from the G-PAC and the Planning Commission, we'll go to the community. We'll likely have a couple of workshops, large workshops. We will have workbooks that people can look at, pictures where you can actually see if, if the city made this change, how would the city look? We'll have a lot of materials to make sure that people really understand what this alternative will do and mean to our city. After we get the comments and feedback from the community through that process, we'll go back through and notify the G-PAC and Planning Commission, this is what people are saying. This is likely a preferred alternative. Hopefully, we can develop that and make that recommendation to City Council, that this is the preferred alternative that we'd like to study. And then we take that preferred alternative, and we'll do a deep EIR analysis about what that means environmentally to the city. And so each time we come to a public, public process or a public meeting, that's another opportunity for the public to comment on it, in addition to general questions and so forth. So as for our next steps, we're going to be very busy. You know, we're going to be drafting, like I said, the, the alternatives. We're going to be evaluating the alternatives. We'll have open houses. We'll have community workshops. So we'll be developing all of that background material for the public and the Planning Commission, the G-PAC, the City Council, to really evaluate which alternative the city should take for the next several years. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dante. Questions from the council? We have a number of cards, also.
Oh, go ahead. Go with the cards first.
Yep. Go ahead. Rick, please. Hernandez. Sorry about the direction there I had to give you, but it's always best to give the cards to the staff.
There we go. Eventually, I'll figure this thing out. So it's my third try. So I'd like to thank Dante for his efforts on the G-PAC meetings and his great work in trying to get feedback from everybody. I wanted to draw a quick response to one of the comments that Dante made. In the feedback we've collected from the community, the number-one priority that our community has come back and said is they want the open space protected. That is the top priority that came back from the surveys. Number three was they wanted more access, better access to open space. Number four was more parks. These are the priorities the community has come out and spoke for, spoken about from surveys and any feedback that was captured quantitatively. The number-nine priority was new development. It's pretty much at the bottom of the list. Half-Moon Bay has some of the most breathtaking, accessible open space anywhere in California. Along our coastal trails, we enjoy seeing raptors, whales, blue herons, eaglets, and other wildlife, as well as views of the Pacific as far as the eye can see. Yet our outdoor recreational treasures are at risk right now. The Pillar Cetus Bridge could be out for at least six months, and other public infrastructure and bridges that allow public access suffer from neglect and erosion. Most importantly, as part of the general plan update that Dante's talking about here, you know, we've brought in consultants to help us go through this process and what we're going to do with the undeveloped land and open space along the coastal bluff tops. So far, the key planning issues that we focused on have been really, and this is on page two of the document, have focused on removing barriers to development. Now, at the last G-PAC meeting, they presented three preliminary proposals that all depict significant changes, new development, and even new roads on lands that go right up next to our coastal trail. New roads right up to the coastal trail where we can have traffic and cars, putting pollution right there where we're trying to enjoy the open space. Now, this doesn't necessarily have to be, and these are proposals. They're areas of change. What I ask all of you to do as the City Council is to look at these plans, look at these proposals, look at the feedback that Dante's soliciting, and help us as a community by providing leadership, by helping us to protect this land now and for generations to come. We need a clear plan to keep our recreational trails in tip-top shape and protect our existing undeveloped coastal bluff top lands and open space. Now, this isn't just, wow, I like the open space because I walk there every day. You know, Santa Clara County's Open Space Authority did a study on the value of open space and public lands in Santa Clara County. The first-ever economic evaluation report demonstrates how natural capital and its benefits directly support the region's economic health and overall well-being. The value, now this is Santa Clara, not our county, the value of Santa Clara County's natural capital is estimated at between $162 and $386 billion. That's the value it brings to the community. And you look at the open space we have along here, you know, that is something that is a tremendous value for our community, and it's something that we need to protect and invest in for the future. So I ask all of you to please provide your leadership as a City Council and help us with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Brian Holt, please.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you. My name is Brian Holt. I live at 472 Myrtle. I'm a member of your General Plan Advisory Committee, and I, first off, want to thank staff for their leadership on the, the general plan process, and also want to thank the council for their efforts on securing funds for the, the Pillar Cetus Bridge repair segment. I wasn't able to make the, the meeting where that was announced, but, but great news, and appreciate all the efforts from city staff and, and the council to, to secure that bridge. I think what you heard is part of that process, and what I hope you'll continue to hear, is that that bridge is important, not just for recreational use, for economic use as well. And I think Rick just made a great point about that as well. And we've heard that in the general process, general plan processes we've gone through. Open space isn't just a lifestyle amenity. It's not just, just a habitat benefit, but it's really an important economic driver for our community. So I hope through this general plan process, I recognize that we've been through this before. There's been lots of battles over open space and development, and, and these aren't conversations that are new. I would love to get to a place that we have a narrative change and that we can actually talk about what the benefit of open space is to our community. And it's, it's not just a battle, and that we're not just talking about open space versus development. And I think what we need to recognize is that there's been a lot of investment in open space in our community over the past number of years. Post has bought a lot of property around here. The Coastside Land Trust has purchased a lot of property. There's a number of properties that are in conservation easements. So a lot of our open space lands have a certain protection over them. And so I was heartened to see that city staff moved forward with engaging those groups and are looking to have, hold a stakeholder meeting with Mid Peninsula Open Space District, with Post, and with others, to, to talk about what their plans are for those open spaces and with what our plans are. And I think if we can get to a point that there's some synergy between those plans, I think we'll find there's some real opportunities to, to find some economic benefits. One needs only to drive down Main Street on the weekend and see the number of mountain bikes on top of cars. One needs only to drive up Higgins Canyon Road to see the number of cyclists that are going up that road, to see the parking that it's up at the end of, at Paris and McCreek Redwoods, to see the opportunity to expand trail access at Burley Murray State Parks, to see the number of people that are using the coastal trail. People love our open space resources here on the coast, and it's an important part of our economy. And so I hope that this will be a foundational part of our general plan. I hope that we can get to a point that our open space resources, our outdoor recreation resources, our agricultural resources are seen as really a very firm part of our local economy and, and something that will really sustain this community as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Final card, Tim Pond, please.
My name is Tim Pond, and I've been a resident of the Half-Moon Bay area for 25 years, and I concur with their statements entirely, except when I am on the coastal trail every day and on my pathway out to the coastal trail, I do realize that I'm on private property, that these lots in large part are owned by people who have paid taxes on them. And I would hope that these people can be, that that land can be preserved and that these people can be properly compensated for the years of taxes they've spent on those pieces of land. And that, the Andriades, for instance, have had a farm here for a long, long time, and, you know, right across from their farm is developed land. And, you know, a lot of people just want to downzone or keep the zoning of the Public Urban Reserve, I think it is over there, whatever it's called. And I, I just, I hate to see, you know, I have some property too, and I hate to see, you know, this kind of stepping in and taking away that land, that taking of that land. I'd like to see it bought, and if it's got the billions of dollars worth of value that it does, then it should be bought, and there should be some mechanism in place to buy it. I'm in favor of infill development entirely, especially these huge open parking lots we have around the town. If you go to Los Altos, if you go to Burlingame, you see the Safeway parking lots have become underneath the buildings, and they put these buildings up. We have the largest development potential in our town probably is the newly parking lot, which is at the gateway of our community. You drive into this town and you see an expansive parking lot. And I just see a lot more opportunity. And then the connection of the outlying spurs, those neighborhoods, I view as extremely important to the downtown area, to make a unified and central town, and give those neighborhoods some kind of feeling of being part of the town, and especially, especially pedestrian access for the three neighborhoods that are on the north of the east side. That the trail was built on the other side of the road just astounds me, the Naomi Partridge Trail. It's a nice trail and everything, but that it was built on the side of the road with the frontage road anyway. It was on the side of Highway 1 with the frontage road, when the other side of the road, there's nowhere for people to walk. And I see people walking with their, you know, hand carts down that road in the dark, in the winter, in the rain. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our cards at this time. Dante, comments, please.
Yes, I just wanted to respond to a couple of the comments by the community. It is true, we got a number of comments from our surveys, our community meetings and comments where people said they wanted to preserve and protect open space. We heard you, and we're developing a plan that focuses on that. We also heard people say that they want to see some other things. And so we're developing the plans for the other emerging issues, and all we are simply going to do is develop plans, lay them side by side, and let the community decide. But not just based on an emotional level, we're going to provide you with hard data about this is essentially what this option means to this community. So all of the comments, they're, they're welcome. These meetings are open to the public. I'm not sure if the, the first speaker was actually at the meeting, and so maybe the subtlety of what we're trying to do was missed. We did not offer concepts or alternatives. We simply wanted to confirm with the G-PAC, are these the emerging issues, and put some things on a map to start brainstorming. The actual alternatives to be commented on will be at the next meeting, November 3rd. There, and it's, it's, one of the things we're, we're talking to the community about is you, it's very difficult to take one side and say, this is the highest use, and, you know, it can be, be considered above everything else. You can do that, but sometimes it's very difficult. For instance, we were talking with some open space advocates. They're interested in open space and preserving open space, but they're also interested in agricultural land and preserving agricultural land. Okay? Farms, who works on the farms? Okay, you've got workers. Where are they going to live? So it's, it's difficult to look at preserving and maintaining and sustaining agricultural uses without thinking about transportation, without thinking about housing, without thinking about recreational things. And that's simply what we're trying to do. The next speaker talked about sitting down with open space advocates to see where our goals meet. Absolutely, exactly what we're trying to do. The other speaker talked about infill development. Yes, that's another concept that we're going to be presenting. And also circulation. Absolutely. That's the concept that we're going to be presenting and getting community comment on.
Very good. Thank you for those responses. Councilman Alafano?
Yeah, I want to, excuse me, I want to thank the staff, especially Dante, for all the work that's gone into this. And I know there's a lot more work to be done, but this is so critical. This is our roadmap forward for the next, who knows, 10-plus years. And I want to thank Brian and the other people on the, on the G-PAC Committee. I think they're doing a great job. And I, Rick wasn't available. He was in China, but I went to Rick Hernandez's Candidates Forum in his, in his backyard a couple weeks ago, and we heard people stand up and say, we really want, we want you to protect open space. So when I got the opportunity to stand up, I said, well, I'm totally in agreement. As a matter of fact, everybody that moved in after me, I want you all to leave because I want to keep all the open space that was here when I got here 45 years ago. We have to draw the fine line as a city with, with zoning power that we do encourage open space and protect it as best we can, and at the same time, protect property rights. Now, if you own a parcel somewhere, and we somehow say to you, I'm sorry, we really don't want you to build there, we have a problem. Now, somebody will be happy that we're not letting you build, but at the same time, people have this desire to be able to use their property someday. So we have to find this fine balance. And I think it's so critical that the people like our three speakers come here tonight and get involved, that we get more of the community, other than just three people coming to the G-PAC meetings and making their, their concerns known. Because my hope is that when this is all done, our community can say, wow, you took the time, you did the outreach, and you've listened, and this is really a good general plan. Not everybody's going to agree with everything, but at the end of the day, we want the majority of our community to agree with what's in there. But I, I'm very happy again also that we're spending the extra money for the outreach. I would highly recommend that maybe, and I'll leave this up to staff, maybe twice in, in a year, we send out a newsletter dedicated just to the general plan and explain to our residents in really basic English, what is, what are we doing? What, what has been said to us, and where are we? And then when we're done, obviously, we need to let everybody in town know, this is the new general plan. What are the changes? What do we change from the old general plan? But again, I want to commend the staff and the G-PAC Committee, I think, doing a great job, and it's, it's so critical. And it's what, I think we're talking about a million dollars to make this happen.
And just quickly, Councilman, that's exactly what is on the schedule for January. We intend to have newsletter and other materials to help people understand the process.
Yeah, Vice Mayor?
Just quickly, thank you, Dante, and thanks for the speakers who came earlier today. There does seem to be a perception that it's just that team that gets to speak about it. I know I passed along a message, someone wanted to be added to it. So yeah, anything we can do to communicate a little more that anyone is welcome to attend these meetings, not only the team, but they can too, to be more aware. I think that'd be helpful. Thanks.
Councilman Patrick?
Yeah, I, I think what's being translated sometimes from the community as far as G-PAC and stakeholders, because there has been comments made here at the podium that the G-PAC is loaded with all developers and things, and they're talking about stakeholders. So I want the public to really clearly understand the G-PAC are not the stakeholders. Stakeholders are totally different. Those are the people that have stake hold in what's being done, and they're the ones that come to the meetings also, but it's not the G-PAC. The G-PAC is really balanced with all diverse people, and we have a lot of environmentalists. We have a lot of people that are really interested. So it's not just developers. That's the first thing I want to... That's the first thing I want to say, is that stakeholders are totally different from the G-PAC members. Secondly, I know, once again, when we start getting into the campaign, and I've been campaigning for 25 years only seven times, and there's always this fear that we are going to develop the bluff tops. We have never, ever built on the bluff tops. We have preserved the bluff tops. That's why we have the coastal trails, and we have the trail that we were able to get from the B-PAC from San Mateo County to build the trails along Highway 1. And the reason we did that was for safety, because we had quite a few people killed walking on the road. And so, and the reason why it's on the west side is because there's property. It was never designed to go on the east side because we don't have right-of-way, and there is no property on that side to build paths. So I just want to clarify that. It wasn't because we didn't want to, it's because we don't have any property on their side, nor is there property available. So, and the other I want to bring up is about the development of property and open space. I am totally for the open space. If we did not, Wavecrest would not be open space right now. The property over, by the car yard would not be open space right now. So I just want people to know that this council is not here building out the property. You know, it is well-balanced. There is a lot of open space. But in my whole time I've been here is I've really tried to preserve the agricultural land, and we have now, don't have sadly enough agricultural land. We don't. It's all, most of it has gone. John's one of the few left farming. And so when I was here, all of west side of Highway 1 was ag with Brussels sprouts and artichokes. And Cuna School, the football field, the soccer field, that was artichoke fields. Our football teams used to play right alongside of the artichoke fields. So, you know, once the city became incorporated and we were no longer a part of San Mateo County, we were our own cities, you know, our former leaders decided that they were going to allow some of the developments. So, I mean, so once that opened up, you know, you can't close the door. You can control it, and that's what we're trying to do, is control it. And so I'm really happy to see this general plan finally get off. We were going to do it seven, eight years ago when we hit with the lawsuit and stopped everything. So I'm really happy to see that this is moving forward and that the people like Brian, you know, volunteered to serve on that G-PAC and guide it. I'm really happy to see that. So keep up the good work, Brian, and your group. So that's all I wanted to say, but I just wanted to reassure the community that we are not going to build on the bluff tops.
Thank you. I think that's very important that we're talking about. Also, I believe the professionalism showed by the staff and others, when we're criticized about leadership, we've stepped up to show leadership. As one of the commentators stated, that this council has really moved this forward with the professionalism of the people that really helped guide us, you know? And I think that's very important, and we saw balance in here a number of times, and I think balance is very, very important. I think when we're looking at our open space, we're probably, I want to say, about 60% of the agricultural land in San Mateo County is now under some open space group or permanent easement, which is huge for our coastal community. And we have to also look when that fear of growth keeps popping up at election time, unfortunately. We do have great control over our densities and what we're going to build on the coast, not only from us as a council, but from the water hookups. I mean, they're just not going to be here. And if we don't get some storms in winter, there's going to be no water for anyone. The reservoirs are dry, the creeks are dry right now. And for agriculture, which you're meeting with a number of them, the few that are still in the city limits, we have to look at, you know, what our grandfathers did and great-grandfathers did, it's not working anymore. So we have to look at alternative ways of agriculture, whatever it may be. We have to have options to stay in agriculture. When we give presentations throughout the world about sustainability, sustainability is in my wallet. What can I do to pay the bills? That's my sustainability. And if what you're producing and what you're trying to sell is not working anymore, then we need alternatives of some way to keep our open space in agriculture. Because the minute you quit farming a piece of ground, I can tell you, in five years, it's going to be full of greasewood, pampas grass, and invasive species. So, you know, I think that's part of the, important part about our open space is what's going to come in there if we don't continue to move it around a little bit. And I think I agree that, you know, that if property is taken, the property owner in our system of democracy has to be compensated. And I know over a period of times, that's not been the way it's worked, but hopefully from the future on now, and what you're looking at here and reviewing, I think is very important. New roads, you know, I think those are challenges, no matter where you go. We can complain. I got a huge email from a complaint about passing by our Highway 1 this weekend. Trust me, go down 280, go down 101 at 8:00 in the morning, and there are five lanes. And that, it just, the growth of Northern California is there. And so, but do we really want to have this community just for certain people to be able to live here? We have to look at the balance. How do we bring all walks of life and all cultures here? So I think it's a good start. It's the first time someone stepped up and showed leadership. I know we get criticized about leadership quite heavily here, but I think we've shown it without a doubt on this one here. So I thank you, unless there's any other further questions. Councilman Kowalczek, Vice Mayor? Thanks for the guidance, Dante, really, and City Manager, City Attorney, and our professional leadership team. So, thank you. And that concludes our agenda for this evening. I think we could close the meeting in memory of Jimmy Medina, who put a lot of hours in for all of our youth at the high school, passed away this past week. So at this time, we'll adjourn in Jimmy Medina's memory. Thank you.